I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of September 15th, 2021. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the door at the back of the room. Please note, the Planning Commission will be allowing testimony on agenda items by video conferencing for those individuals who have pre-registered. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open, and no parking coupons are required. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following agenda items: 1.2 County Special Permit 21032, and 1.3 Special Permit 21034. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 1st, 2021.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Jerry?
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time, and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak, or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all the consent agenda items on the record. Once these items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we will ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion of approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Item 1.1 is changes on 21032 from R2 Residential District to O2 Suburban Office District on property generally located at 2152 South 56th Street. Item 1.2 is Special Permit 21032 to allow for an accessory dwelling unit on property generally located at 15525 South 176th Street. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the County Board within 14 days. The next item is item 1.3 Special Permit 21034 to allow for the sale of alcohol for consumption off the premises on property generally located at 2020 Southwest 5th Street. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Item 1.4 is text amendment 21007 amending Title III Design Standards for Zoning Regulations by amending Chapter 3.85 Capitol Environments Design Standards, Section 4 Design Standards and Guidelines, Design Standard 22 Centennial Mall Landscape, and Design Standard 23 Lincoln Mall Landscape to provide additional guidance for placement of monuments and memorials along Centennial Mall and Lincoln Mall, and repealing Section 4 of Chapter 3.85 as hitherto existing. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place, or additional information you learned while visiting this site?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Item 1.1.
Okay, that would be changes on 21032. We will remove that from the consent agenda and schedule for a separate hearing under item, or Section 3 of today's agenda.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any of these agenda items? I will take a motion on the consent agenda?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Cor.
Jerry?
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members, and/or included as part of the record, please place the information in the folder on the podium. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak, unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. The clerk will then indicate you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your, oh, I've already said that. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing, unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first item.
Okay. Item 3.1 is changes on 21032 from R2 Residential District to O2 Suburban Office District on property generally located at 2152 South 56th Street. The staff recommendation on this item is conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place, or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
No. George?
Thank you. George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. The location where we're at is just to the northeast of South 56th Street and Newton Street. Another point of reference would be South Street, 56th Street intersection, which is just to the north. And the request is to rezone from R2 Residential to O2 Suburban Office on two properties, the first being the applicant's property, which has an existing house, and then also the property to the north, which is an existing parking lot that is not owned by the applicant, but which has a special permit on it from the 1970s. The request is based on the proposal for an office use. The applicant proposes to reuse the existing house for a small office, which would require four parking spaces, which would be provided in the back of the property. The, as far as the property to the north, that use, which is a parking lot use, would be legal and can continue as it has been for all these years since the special permit was issued on it from the 1970s. The reason for the inclusion of that property is for contiguous O2 zoning. Otherwise, we'd have a standalone island or spot zone with the applicant's property. The recommendation is conditional approval. The condition is for a change of zone agreement that encompasses two aspects. One would be the closure of the 56th Street driveway access pursuant to access management policy, and the other would be to pave part of the alley either south to Newton Street, or else to the north. Most likely, they would choose the going to Newton Street, since it would be less expensive. And as I understand it, that agreement has been finalized, and the applicant is okay with it, but I can let them speak further on that if there's any questions you may have.
Questions for George? No, I think you're good now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, applicant.
Good afternoon. My name is Ian Post. I'm an attorney with Baylor Admin Law Firm. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, High Bar Properties LLC. George, describe the nature of this change in zone in detail, so I will just provide, you know, a little bit more color, and then leave it open for any questions or comments. Again, we are requesting a change of zone for this property from R2 Residential to O2. There is the intent to have a insurance office in the building, so with the idea that it will drive very little traffic. At, per city policy, the city has requested that conditional zoning agreement, that we would, the redeveloper, my client, would agree to pave the alley and to relinquish access off 56th Street. We've gotten to a form of a conditional zoning agreement that, that my client is agreeable to, that would provide for that relinquishment of access and paving the alley. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, to hear any other comment, and I'd just ask for the chance to, well, provide any feedback once we get comments, so.
Dan, would you leave that up, please?
Oh, sure.
You're only circling the house, and actually, it's the next lot north then, too, right?
Well, so, correct. So, the applicant's application was to, and my client's, was to just rezone this lot. At planning's request, the lot, this parking lot was also included to have that contiguous O2 zoning.
And isn't it barber shop just north of that?
Yes, this is zoned O2 right now.
Yeah.
I believe that's a barber shop, but that's based on my memory of driving past it, so.
I can't see in the picture, but is there parking behind the building there?
From what I can tell from this aerial, there is the drive here, and there's parking here.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Other questions, Fran?
Thank you. Thank you. Again, I'm happy to clarify anything if necessary.
Is there testimony in support of this application? Is there any neutral testimony, and testimony in opposition? Any questions for staff? Okay. I think we can take a motion to close the public hearing, then?
I would move we close the public hearing.
Second, Joy.
Jerry?
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I would move to approve change of zone CG21032.
Second, Cor.
Uh, any discussion?
No.
No? All right. Jerry?
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, next public hearing item is item 4.1 Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21018 to review the proposed one and six-year Lancaster County Road and Bridge Construction Program for fiscal year 2022 and 2023 to 2027 as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommendation is a finding of general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
Yes. I think they talked about this at the mayor's roundtable on Monday.
Noted.
Director Carey?
David Carey with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Here, as the staff representative, our county engineer Pam Dingman is here as well, that will provide us some more information about the actual one and six program. Just want to put on, put out there that this is a required step in the process for approval of the one and six plan. We come to you for a review as to conformance with the comprehensive plan. That has been done in this case, and we have come to a finding of general conformance with the comprehensive plan. Put this in perspective, this is similar to what we do with the city's capital improvements program. It is to make sure that we are considering the comprehensive plan when we put together our capital programming, and that is the case on the county side as well. I know that the county engineer will have quite a bit of information about the program itself and the background. I would say that there's an emphasis here to make sure that there is coordination between the city and the county, and we are very supportive of that when it comes to these improvements as identified. I would also note that when, we're not taking into consideration for conformance with the comprehensive plan, but a note of information is that, like all other programs on our transportation side of things, we, we do need and are in need of more funding for these programs and these projects. So just put that on the record, kind of in support of our county program, that we need to have that discussion ongoing. So with that, I can answer any questions. Otherwise, we'll have the county engineer come forward.
Questions for David?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am county engineer Pam Dingman. This afternoon, and, okay, good, we're starting. This afternoon, I have with me in the audience Larry Legg, who is the Assistant County Engineer, as well as John Berry, who is the county surveyor, and Monae Mullen, who is our project coordinator. Um, go forward here just a second. There we go. Uh, this is my contact information. I want all of you to be aware that I am happy if you ever have any questions about county engineering or the roads, you're welcome to call me and have a discussion. I do try to meet with the public and get as much information out there as possible, because I think it's important to our program. And apparently, I'm about 50% of the height of the mature corn in the county currently. Lancaster County has 293 bridges, or bridge-length box culverts, which means that's a box culvert that spans more than 20 feet. We have 45 miles of road that are still dirt and have never been improved, 1,052 miles of gravel road, 800, or 283 miles of paved road. In addition to that, we have approximately 1,000 box culverts that span less than 20 feet, and 6,900 pipe culverts, including driveway pipes. I think it's important to note, the last couple of years, we've been working on a GIS inventory of all of our pipes, so we can create a dashboard. We are about 50% complete with that, because it's obviously not a one-year program. And we have determined that about 30% of the county's culverts need to be replaced. Here's a photo of what, what inspecting these pipes looks like. We have a number of things that, that we inspect when we go out. In addition to engineering, we are also the home of the Lancaster County Survey. We have survey documents all the way back to 1865 for the county. Most of them have been scanned and are available online, so that during COVID, people didn't have the need to come into our office to view those documents. We also preserve the section corner monument markers that were installed in 1865. A few years ago, when the city did the project at 27th and O Street, we actually went out prior to pavement and found that marker and protected it in place and reburied it. So it is kind of cool that those original section line markers, which really define everything in the county, are still there. We do have many maintenance operations in the county at several locations. We have approximately eight locations where we store material at any given time. Sometimes there's as many as 10 locations. I'm happy to say that we are currently getting rock and gravel, although it is still difficult, and I think it will remain difficult for the next couple of years. We have 13 buildings at many locations around the county, and we still own the Lancaster County Rock Quarry, although it did run out of rock in the 1970s. Facilities for us remain a primary concern. Last year, we sold the Hickman and Bennett Buildings, which no longer met modern operations. The Hickman Building didn't have running water, so that, that's a bit of a problem if you have people in the building. The Bennett Building no longer could hold any of our equipment, so no equipment could pass through that garage, which is, is a bit of a problem. And then in addition to that, we have our 40th and Saltillo Building, which we can't get a motor grader in and out of anymore due to the high volume of traffic in the area. So this, in the south part of the county, we have dramatic concerns about how we're going to continue to provide services to the citizens of southern Lancaster County. In addition to our maintenance buildings on the shop, we are also, are out around the county, we are also the home of the auto mechanic shop for the entire county. That includes the sheriff, the assessor's office, and anyone else who has, has vehicles that need to be repaired. We have what's a light mechanic shop for cars and, and small trucks, as well as a heavy mechanic shop for our heavy equipment. We do supply all of the county vehicles with gas, and so when I became county engineer, I didn't really ever have an idea that I would be, you know, the gas station person. I'm hoping someday the software for that isn't named Gas Boy. Maybe it can be named Gas Person, but, you know, everyone's got to have a goal. In addition, in the last year, we've started supplying LPD with their gas, and so that is a really good example of how we share services back and forth between the county and the city to benefit the taxpayer. The winter of 2021, as you guys are aware, that, that was a doozy, both with the cold temperatures and with the snow. I have now in my tenure been present for the snowiest winter on record, and the third snowiest winter on record. I'm hoping that that makes me about done for my career, because it really seems like I shouldn't hold all top five of those. One of the things, though, that was a super bonus for us this year is we really did have minimal flooding and minimal severe weather events throughout the year, and that has allowed us to catch up with a number of our Lancaster County projects. Some of the challenges, though, that we are facing in 2021 is extreme inflation, and steel prices have increased over 300% in the last 18 months. The funding that we estimated would buy 22 pipe culverts last March, April, or April is now going to only supply 12. And in addition to that, we're finding that the lead time on getting these steel pipes is now over 120 days. And so pipes that we ordered about five weeks ago, we're told we may receive after Christmas. That's a long time when you have an emergency culvert that needs to be installed. In addition to the shortage of steel, we also have a shortage of paint. This has been a concern for us as we've needed to paint the roads after our projects. We were fortunate enough to buy our paint this year and have it stored onsite so early. I don't know as though I'm going to be able to do that next year. I do hope that paint becomes more available. That tragic weather event that happened in Texas last spring really shut down the plants that make the pigment that go in the paint for the roads, and, and the system has not recovered yet. In addition, aluminum and aluminum signs are an issue for us currently. We recently had the supplier go ahead and, and not agree to supply through his contract. As a former business owner, I understand that. If, if your, if your cost has gone up 300%, you can't keep, keep supplying items through that contract. So we're hoping that can get better. Another example of some of the hardships that we're experiencing is, we ordered two new snow plows last July, due to shortages in the supply chain and computer chips and other things. We don't expect delivery of those two trucks until sometime in October. I'm keeping my fingers crossed. And so I don't really know, as county engineer, where the next surprise is going to come up for me. However, we're becoming very aware that there will be a surprise. I've talked to you many times over the last several years about the FEMA process and my, my disappointment and struggles with the FEMA process. Hey, I'm happy to tell the commission that we've finally been paid for all the damage from 2015 about four weeks ago, and so we're making progress. I have received final notice that we will be receiving the payment for FY19, as well as the good news that, that the federal government will not be funding that at 75%, but at 90% because of the type of damage that was done to all of Nebraska. And I think that will be great, not only for the county, but for the city, and for all of our peer counties and cities. We will continue to request from the commissioners use of their reserve emergency funds for these emergency events. Many people aren't aware that although the commissioners do have a reserve fund, they have not allowed county engineering to use that reserve fund for flooding events. So what's that has meant in 2015 and in 2019 is that I canceled my construction program to fix these things. Because the other thing a lot of people don't realize is FEMA is a reimbursement program. So they expect you to fix whatever item it is and then seek reimbursement. And in some cases, that reimbursement takes a really long time. We do have one additional structure that we're still waiting on reimbursement for, which was a box culvert that we built with hazard mitigation funds. And for those funds, we constructed the box about two years ago, and we just, maybe in the last couple of weeks, have gotten FEMA out, and they keep agreeing that they're going to pay us, but they're, they're kind of bad friends with, with how their payments come along, and so we're hoping to get that taken care of. Just on an order of magnitude, this, this year's winter did allow us to catch up on our scour critical and scour susceptible bridges. What you'll see here on the photo are two, two slides. Prior to the 2018 storm, we had 42 bridges that were either scour critical or scour susceptible on our inventory. With bridges that are in design or construction at this moment, I hope by the end of October to be back to 42 bridges. So it has been a journey. We are making progress, and I know that opening these bridges will be a big deal to the citizens of Lancaster County. Also, since 2018, which is kind of the year that I've been using to benchmark for our organization, in 2018, we had 20 bridges that were, were, had a sufficiency rating of less than 50. Today, we have replaced 11 of those bridges, so you might think, hey, we're making some great progress. Unfortunately, we're not. We now have 24 bridges with rating of less, less than 50, and only four of those bridges are planned for, currently planned for replacement or repair. So yesterday, we opened a bridge, so we actually only have 11 closed bridges. We have four of those bridges that are under design or construction, and seven of those bridges with no funding or no plan, no repair plan. And that continues to be very difficult for my office, because if we haven't started the engineering for that, for those bridges, that means that we, we have no plan to move forward. On bridge ratings, the federal government has changed ratings to good, fair, and poor, or green, yellow, and red. We have 27 bridges on our inventory that are rated poor. These bridges need to be replaced as These bridges need to be replaced as soon as possible. I do hope that in the future, we can work to get these bridges off of our inventory. Overall, our current bridge needs, we have 27 that are structurally deficient. That means they can't hold a standard load. Four that are functionally obsolete. That means they may be a one-lane bridge, or they may be a truss bridge that isn't wide enough to allow transport of a modern vehicle. 34 that are scour susceptible, 13 that are scour critical, 27 with a poor rating, 24 with that sufficiency rating less than 50. We rate 62nd out of counties in Nebraska as far as square foot of deficient bridge. And I think that is significant. Hey, I think we're up a little bit from 65th. But as I would say, our goal as the second most populated county in Nebraska would be to have, be much higher on the scale than we currently are. We rate fourth as far as counties in Nebraska with the largest number of closed bridges. And again, that becomes significant with our population. I want to talk a little bit about subdivisions and subdivisions that are currently maintained by Lancaster County. So I know that you guys see a lot of acreages come through. What's become really evident over the years is the last 20 years, the commissioners have wanted the county to take over maintenance of these subdivisions. I understand that snow removal and maintaining your road is expensive. However, although they have passed that on to the county engineer's office as our own unfunded mandate, there has not been an increase in funding to take care of these subdivisions. And as they keep coming on, they are becoming more of a burden to our system. Last year, the county spent approximately $1 million patching 12 subdivisions and chip sealing the subdivisions in order to try to pave or preserve the pavement for as long as possible. I want to talk a little bit about chip seal because we haven't done it out in the county, and it's not really a process that you see a lot in the city. So I've gotten a lot of phone calls on, why are you making our paved road back to a gravel road? That's not what we're doing. The chip seal process, step one is to apply an emulsification. In the photo, you can see that being applied by the white truck. Step two is to apply a chip limestone, which is rolled in to that emulsification. Step three is to compact that, which can take, and here you see the rollers on a section, and then put a fog seal up over the top. We know that this extends the life, the surface life of our pavement by five to seven years. Of course, the goal is always not how many potholes do you have and how many potholes have you filled, but like try to get to a point where you don't have potholes. Because we know that once we have potholes, we've lost the battle. And here's a picture of that fog seal. When we talk about pavement maintenance, it's a little different than the bridge maintenance discussion. During the last year, we actually did a mill and fill on 5.35 miles of road. Or I should say, during the current year, we will do a mill and fill of 5.35 miles. This is where we're going to mill off two inches and fill it back two inches. It is very quick, it's very effective, it's a little cheaper than the standard mill two, fill three. What does this mean to us? Well, we are catching up on our asphalt maintenance. So we have a 100-point rating system for asphalt also. In FY14, we had more than 90 of our 300 miles that needed maintenance. In FY2020, we were able to get down to 35 miles, just a little under 36 miles, and currently we're at 33 miles. And so we are making substantial progress there, which is why I'll be going back to the commissioners and asking for some of our operation funds that were earmarked for asphalt maintenance to be moved over to our bridge fund for bridge construction. If I could talk a little bit about current pavement needs. This is a photo of our current traffic counts. In FY19, well, in FY2020, and again this year, it's been difficult for us to get accurate traffic counts or updated traffic counts, mainly because, of course, the traffic counters have not been available because there's a computer chip in that. We're hoping by the next month to have most of our traffic counts updated. These are our 2019 numbers. In 2019, we had nine miles of road with over 400 cars a day, vehicles a day, and 24 miles with over 300 vehicles a day. This is significant because of the dust that this creates. And in addition to that, just the wear and tear for a gravel road, they're not meant to have this many cars on them or this many vehicles on them, and it becomes extraordinarily difficult for us to maintain. This is just a quick slide of our 2021 traffic counts, which remain in progress. We're getting there, it's just taking a little longer than we thought. In addition, we continue to work on the Saltillo Road project. We did have our public information meeting for it last spring. The Nebraska Department of Transportation tells us that it is forecasted for FY25 for construction because we're trying to work around the Beltway construction for this project. It will be an exciting project for South Lancaster County. And I've joked with my peers at the city that I believe I won't own it very long after we finish it. I think it will be quickly annexed. We're going to try to slot this in a little sooner if we can, but we are really dependent on the South Beltway construction progress. In addition to Saltillo as a safety project, we have also signed the agreement with the state to do 148th and Holdridge intersection improvements as a safety project. And so we're just starting on that. I'm kind of excited about that. The commission may recall in the past that we know that 148th Street fails all modern traffic requirements in 2030, which is not very long from here. And that's if the Beltway is not constructed. So I'm going to give it that caveat. But since we haven't started on the Beltway, I don't really see that happening. My concern as county engineer is we've seen traffic year after year increase at the rate of about 10% in this corridor, and it has now become the de facto South Beltway. It has similar issues to Saltillo and South 68th Street, and we really need to start getting some of the improvements in. The price tag for those improvements in 2018 dollars was about $40 million. In addition to that, we also continue to look at South 68th Street. And so we do have some funding in our current budget for the design and right-of-way purchases on South 68th Street. The commissioners chose to put $1 million in their cash reserves for South 68th Street. On the surface, that sounds great. It is a little difficult for me because it's not in my sinking funds that are in county engineering. So I can't use that money to project my program forward by state statute. When we continue to look at pavement needs, after October 1st, which is the federal fiscal year, we will select an engineer for the Fletcher Avenue project. This project will proceed forward with MPO funding and is in the current, the current plan. We're excited to get going on this project from 84th Street all the way out to 148th Street. In addition, this year, you're going to see also with MPO funds to have an engineer selected sometime after October 1st, Northwest 56th Street from Holdridge to I-80. And you may notice in the photo that the dashed blue line is actually the city's jurisdiction. And so this is another road that I don't think will be in our jurisdiction for very long. But I do think it is important, especially with its proximity to the new high school, that we get started on it. Bridge projects completed in the last fiscal year, we constructed five bridges and we repaired seven. We have four bridges that are under contract that we hope to complete by the end of October, for sure, by the end of November. And in addition, we have another three bridges that are ready to go out for bid. They're large bridges, and should federal funding become available for these, we will modify our program and come back and let these bridges. Here's a photo of one of the five bridge-to-box covert projects that we finished this year. That is me standing up on top of the box covert. So you can see, this is a very large covert, probably about the max size that our department will construct as a bridge-to-box covert replacement program. I just want to discuss briefly, as we're replacing these, we are designing them to a higher level. We are looking at the velocities of the water and the flows so that these culverts can last well into the future. And here is a photo of Box Covert Y-181. This is a bridge that I closed approximately five years ago. It was a cut limestone bridge that is being replaced. Hey, I'm super excited to tell you that this bridge will be complete next week and we'll be able to open it. At the same time, my heart is really sad to tell you that yesterday, the pipe covert about 200 yards south of this bridge failed. So all that work to move forward, and we're going to get about 200 yards of additional road out of it. And so those are the kind of days I have as county engineer that are just somewhat heartbreaking. In addition, this last year, really due to some funding that was provided to us in 2019, we went ahead and we purchased an excavator, as well as created a second labor crew solely dedicated to repairing structures and bridges. And I have to say, I'm really proud of how good they've done. They're really getting good at repairing our structures and our bridges. The picture on the left is Bridge B-25, which is a channel repair and stabilization project because this bridge was scour critical. The picture on the right is also a channel stabilization project. But with this bridge, what had happened is the abutments had become no longer stable, and so we reconstructed the bridge abutments. And it was a first-of-a-kind project for us, and we're pretty excited. This bridge is the bridge that actually opened yesterday after some delay because, of course, there's a shortage of guardrail. When we look at projects completed or in progress for our previous budget year, we did 17 miles of asphalt overlay, 13 miles of new pavement design. We had .43 miles of project grading, and that was in cooperation with the NRD for a dam reconstruction. And we continue to work on the engineering. Bridge projects proposed in FY22, we're proposing the construction of two bridge projects. Bridge D-88, which is shown on the right-hand side of the screen. This is actually an old Defense Department missile bridge that was built for us in the 1950s. This bridge on Agnew Road was a really awesome bridge until the flood of 2015. We've done three major stabilization projects on it. We have not been able to stabilize this bridge. And so it is on a paved route. It does need to have priority replacement. It's also a major school route for Raymond Central. The bridge on the left-hand side of the screen is Bridge E-171. It is currently closed. We were able to get a grant from the Nebraska Transportation Innovation Program in order to replace this bridge. And in partnership, we'll be pushing that bridge out to bid with a bridge in Saunders County. Additional bridge projects proposed in the current budget year are six bridges for engineering. R-184 is on Roca Road. And the picture of it is on the left. It is in very bad shape. It's one of those bridges that can check off multiple boxes. It's poor, it's load-posted, it's scour critical, and we really need to get this bridge off our inventory in order to stabilize our system. The bridge in the middle is an old WPA bridge. It's Bridge O-44. It is on Roca B Road in between Highway 77 and 14th Street. The thing about this bridge is it's on a spread footing. It's bad. That road has been closed and will not be connected to Highway 77 with the completion of the Beltway project. And so we're going to probably replace it with some pipes in order to keep the cost down as much as possible. And the bridge on the right is a bridge that I have spoken to the commission before. It's Bridge F-201. It is just east of the intersection of North 27th Street and Arbor Road. This is going to proceed forward in engineering with MPO funding. I also think I probably won't own this bridge very long after we've got there. In addition to that, we do plan to repair another two of our major structures next year. When we look at road projects proposed for FY22, we have our asphalt overlay of four miles of state rec road in partnership with Nebraska Game and Parks and NDOT that is down around Wagon Train Lake, which is over by Hickman. We've proposed 1.7 million in pavement preservation. We have the engineering on 2.42 miles of road. And then I just wanted to note too, the wagon train, the rec road project, is a project that, well, I hit Larry Leg up to fund when he was at NDOT, and he's now, of course, been on our team for over three years. And so we're hoping that we can move that project along because it really needs to be taken care of. We'll continue to emphasize, we'll continue to emphasize our focus on maintenance. When we look at our future focus, in addition to aggressive maintenance programs such as the chip sealing that I've discussed with you, the fog sealing, we're also going to look at maintenance programs for our bridges like Shot Creek, which stabilizes concrete that is coming off of the bridges, and foam injection. Foam injection has been a very successful program for us in Lancaster County in stabilizing bridges, and then, of course, embankment stabilization. As our bridges continue to be put on the poor list, it has become apparent in many cases that we built multiple bridges under one contract for a number of years. North 48th Street had the three bad bridges. North 14th Street had the three bad bridges. They were all constructed the same year. Roca Road has three bad bridges. This is obviously expensive. They obviously, maybe they were washed out by a flood and had to all be replaced at the same time. To some extent, I feel bad that I'm replacing them all at the same time again because I'm creating a similar issue for another engineer, hopefully 100 years from now. But, you know, maybe we won't need cars 100 years from now, I don't know. Between 2016 and 2021, 25 bridges have been replaced with box culverts. And in addition to that, we've replaced three bridge-to-bridge projects, which are the larger projects. Lancaster County Engineering Department is now faced with the challenge of having to deal with the big bridges, the bridges that are more than 150 feet. In fact, that Bridge D-88 that I talked to you about up on Agnew Road, when we went to design that bridge, I remember saying to the assistant county engineer, you know, the problem with that bridge is it's about 100 feet too short. And he kind of laughed at me and said, well, we haven't done the work yet. And I'm like, it's 100 feet too short. After the design was complete, he came back to me and said, well, it's not 100 feet too short, it's just like 90 feet. Which just, you know, those are the way engineers joke with themselves. We're a little off as people. When we look at proposed bridge projects for 2022, I did put a number of those projects in standby should funding become available to get funding out for the bridges that we are significantly complete with the engineering process. On the other side, you'll see years two through six. And what we're looking at is really coming back there and picking those bridges off that poorly rated bridge list and just continuing to march down the road. As we look at proposed, other proposed projects in the FY23 through FY27 years, we're going to look at North 14th Street. We've now replaced four bridges on North 14th Street, as well as three or four smaller box culverts. Now that road needs to be overlaid because it's a little bumpy when you drive over all those asphalt patches. I'd really hope to be able to do that in the current budget year. However, it looks like we have a couple more pipes that we're going to need to replace. So I'm just going to humbly ask for patience for the people who use that corridor every day, which I know- day, which I know at least Ms. Joy probably has a good chance of using it. I'm sorry for the impact on your life, but when it's done, it's going to be really, really great. We're going to continue to work on the engineering permitting and right-of-way acquisition for the Salchelo Corridor. This is going to be a major effort for our department. It's one of the largest projects to date that we have ever done. And then, we are currently working on the engineering permit and construction for the 98th Street Corridor in two pieces, A to O, as well as A to Old Chaney. We think that the A to Old Chaney piece will probably be possible next year, provided that we can get through the federal environmental process. The A to O piece is going to be a little more sticky than that. It's got a number of issues and challenges. Some of the other things that we've worked on in the last year is FEMA has changed their protocol and is now requiring that we have video or photo documentation of all pre-existing conditions in order to file a FEMA claim. I know from my research, it appears we have a FEMA claim every three to five years. We had a special project where we gave this box of GoPros to our young interns and asked them to figure out a way to get us effectively a videotape of everything in the county. We have figured that out, and we have associated that with our GIS maps, so that you can bring up these videos and see what's going on on any section of county road. In addition to that, last week on 98th Street, between Holdridge and Adams, we did our first pilot dust control project. Dust, especially with these unpaved roads and dry conditions, is a huge issue for our department. With the amount of traffic on it, I'm not really sure how it's going to hold up yet, but we thought that we should try a mile and see how that is. So, if you have a chance to go out and look at it, the road, when you apply dust control, becomes very, very solid and somewhat unmaintainable, and so, I'm hoping that it will hold up because if it does start getting chuck holes in it or some washboarding, it's going to be very difficult to maintain. We have also continued to up our game on social media so that we can push road closures and other information about our system out to the public. You can find us on Twitter at Lancaster, or at Lanc Co-Engineering, and on Facebook at Lancaster County Engineering, as well as on our website. The full 1-6 in the boring format, boring tabular format, is on my website, as well as the county commissioner's website, if you're interested in looking at it. And then, in addition to that, I just want to state that I'm really honored that I've pushed a lot of changes in my eight-year tenure as Lancaster County Engineer, and I'm really honored that I have a team that is dedicated to continuously improving. And so, with that, I'll ask if you have any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Pam?
I have one.
Does it have calculus?
No.
Okay.
I hate calculus. Why do we own a rock quarry if there's no rock in it?
That's a good question. I've asked myself that question. So, we currently store rock out there, and we have some equipment that we store out there. I've spent some time previously, and it's been interesting to me to learn that as government, we're kind of hoarders. So, in the past, any piece of equipment that the county owned that maybe they were going to use, maybe they thought they were going to use, went out to the quarry. We've spent a lot of time cleaning that up, so that it's no longer just where we store stuff that has, you know, really should be disposed of. You know, in the future, that might be something that we look at, but right now, we need that to store our equipment.
I had a feeling we were storing some stuff. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation.
Pam, could you email me a copy of that PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I meant to get it to you before I left the office.
So, is there any testimony in support of this application? Any neutral or testimony in opposition? Do we have questions for staff or additional questions for Pam? Okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Core. Jerry?
Campbell, Core. Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I would move that we approve the Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21018, which reviews the proposed one- and six-year Lancaster County road and bridge construction program fiscal year 2022, or 2022, and 2023 through 2027, as in conformance with the 2040 Lake and Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan.
Second, Joy. Discussion?
I think that they're doing as good of a job as they possibly can with the limited resources of funds, and hopefully, the federal monies will come through on that, which would help speed up some of the projects there. With as many miles as we've got in the county, we're one of the larger counties, road-wise and everything, and they're, of course, far more populated than other large counties, which requires a different level of maintenance and construction. So, I would commend the Engineering Department on what they've done.
Anything else?
Same song. For as long as I've been on Planning Commission, it's the same message. The plan is always, the plan is great. There's a lot of work to be done, and we lack fiscal ability to get it done. And as we've seen as commissioners, it affects some of the projects that we actually review, and it's just been critical for a long time, unfortunately.
Yeah. I just want to commend Pam and her staff for, you know, I continue to be amazed with how much they get done, with how little resources they have, and I think that's a credit to Pam's leadership. And, you know, it's tough. I mean, I see that funding here is about almost half of what it was, and I wish it was going the other way, but on the other hand, I don't know where that money's going to come from either, so it's just a tough situation, and I appreciate all that she does for us.
And I also agree with my fellow commissioners, and I think all of your department is doing a great job with what you have, and I'm excited to see on the dust control, we hear that a lot up here, and again, we anticipate seeing a lot more growth in the county as we move forward.
Jerry?
Okay, this is for finding of conformance. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, next item is under Administrative Action Only, which is item 5.1, changes zone 21030 from O-2 Suburban Office District to B-3 Business District on property generally located at 4821 Lowell Avenue. Staff recommendation is for approval. I would just note that the public hearing on this application was closed at the last hearing.
I would move that we approve change of zone 21030, subject to the applicant signing a conditional zoning agreement, which prohibits the uses listed in the September 9th 2021 memo, which establishes a 10-foot side setback on the east property line for structures only and a 35-foot height limit.
Second, Core. Discussion?
I think that they've come to a good compromise on this. It's protection for the residential property, and yet, it does allow them to proceed with making the parking lot official, and so, I think it's a win for everybody in this situation.
I just want to thank the applicant for agreeing to the two-week deferral and allowing us to kind of flush out some of these things so that we could get a good compromise for both parties, and I really appreciate all the work that staff did.
I would like to make a point of clarification, and Steve, I may ask you to speak to this in place of Stephanie, but in addition to the September 9th memo, we did receive another email from the neighbor to clarify what their position was with regard to this conditional zoning agreement, and provided some additional information. I wanted, I wanted Steve perhaps to speak to how the applicant and planning feels about the differences between the information in the ninth memo versus what was presented by the neighbors.
Sure. Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, filling in for Stephanie Rouse. So, on the overhead here, the property that is in question, the box in red is the land, and I'll try to zoom in a little bit here. So, on the north side is Lowell Avenue. 48th Street is to the west. You have B-3 zoning. The box in red is the property that is owned by Lee Douglas. The western part of that property is zoned B-3. The eastern portion is zoned O-2. The email that you received is from the property owner to the east. Their property is zoned O-2 as well, but their current used, use, zooming in here to the property, their current use while it is O-2 is a residential use. And so, the change of zone to B-3 from the current O-2, the zoning agreement would have the restriction on the four uses that said the property couldn't be used for kennels, motor vehicle wash, service and repair facilities, or for restaurants, restaurants with a drive-through facility. The adjacent owner is asking to add four additional uses that would also be prohibited, garden centers, hotel motels, social hall, and mini warehouse. And that was based on an original email that when Stephanie was trying to open up the discussion, she simply listed some uses that they might look at, and as we started talking about these further, we had recommended that, we didn't see a particular reason why garden centers would have any negative impact. And particularly, two here, this is a fairly unique zoning agreement that you're requiring B-3 be a transition to a transitional zoning district. In most cases, you might do a zoning agreement when it's B-3 or B-1 next to residential zoning, and then, you're trying to have the B-3 kind of be a transitional zoning district. In this case, the O-2 is the transitional zoning district. It has residential today, but that residential by right could be removed at any time, or the building transitioned to an office use. So, for instance, it could be another one of the O-2 uses in there, such as personal services, that type of thing. So, we were also really looking at the circumstances and didn't see that if this was a mini warehouse, mini warehouse typically is a very quiet use, doesn't particularly have a lot of traffic. You couldn't see why that would have been potentially a negative impact on an office use next door. And the hotel motel social hall are pretty unlikely uses to be in this particular circumstance. This is a small lot. Their ownership is rather small. It's a couple of lots in from 48th Street, so your chances of actually having somebody trying to own or build a hotel motel here is rather remote. And again, we also don't see that as a particularly negative use. So, that's why we had recommended that the four uses that were in the memo would be the four that you would limit. The other request from the applicant, from the property owner to the east, was to change the height limit from 35 feet to 28 feet. Would note that residential zoning allows 35 feet. The O-2 is actually a rather unique district, and that it has a 28-foot height limit that is lower than actually residential. So, this property to the east, which is zoned O-2, that this sent you that email, to the east of them could actually be a 35-foot tall building. It is residentially zoned. So, again, we didn't see that necessarily the height would have a negative impact on the O-2 zoning that was to the east. So, that's why we thought it was appropriate, though, to limit the height to at least the 35 feet, which would be your typical residential. And there doesn't seem to be any dispute about adding the 10-foot side yard setback. Again, this property today's side yard setback is zero as O-2, so they are adding 10-foot in where otherwise it would have been zero. So, that's a quick explanation of what is proposed, and then, yes, you received an email from the property owner to the east asking for some changes.
Great. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Any other discussion?
I just want to say that I don't have any problem with the 35 height. I mean, I think that that's pretty standard. I can understand why they would want some of those other conditions to be included in there, just for kind of a security or safety kind of viewpoint. I do want to go on record and say that while O-2 is a transitional, you know, district, and it may seem, you know, funny to put, you know, transitional, you know, next to transitional, or however Steve worded it, but really, what my goal here is, is to keep that as transitional instead of changing it to B-3, because really what we're doing is we're accommodating a parking lot that was put in, and to, but to keep, you know, the O-2, the transitional there, and that's the primary goal here in my mind.
Any other discussion? I agree. I think we've come to a good compromise that will protect the neighbors, address some of their concerns, and ensure that our applicant can move forward with her business as quickly as possible. Jerry?
Okay. This is for the approval with the...
Conditional zoning agreement?
Yes, conditional zoning agreement, as identified in the September 9th memo from staff. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing none, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Campbell.
Core, second.
Jerry?
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.